Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is 7:02. I'd like to call the January 4th Board of Education meeting to order, please, if you could join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we'll call trustees, all board members of the president, Mr. Sampson will be joining us remotely. Very soon, I believe, so. Okay, for the good of the order, any comments from board members, the good of the order?
I would say thank you for opening today, Frank. You know, there was a lot of uncertainty, especially over the weekend, as to whether schools were going to be open. And I think we all agree that that's the best thing for our kids, so I'm glad you made the decision to keep the schools open. And hopefully people are adhering to the protocols and doing what they need to do to keep each other safe. But I, for one, am glad that we're open.
Thank you. The decision that I try to evaluate every five minutes of the day.
This school has, you've developed a plan, like you and your team have developed a plan that's kept the staff and the students safe. And you know, I know you keep an eye on it and you keep on checking on it, but the safety of every person in the district is...
We're, as I say, we're in the kid business. We're here for kids and, you know, we have 1,200 students in our district that we need to be able to provide for, so.
And 200, was it 200, seven hundred were provided?
Yeah.
So, the 1,400 people who stay here, do you, thank you.
Well, I cannot think that there was another time, certainly in your career, that there were more daily hurdles that were thrown in front of you than this year, so far this year and probably yet to come. This has just been such a challenging time. I mean, you just don't seem to have the ability to really plan tomorrow, because who knows what tomorrow's gonna bring?
You just clearly, you just clearly do not know about what the next step is. It's just crazy.
It does seem that way.
Yeah, well, I'd say in 10 years, this will make me an amazing superintendent.
You get through this year.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be good. But I, I have to say, I have to say that, you know, the Capitol District Superintendent, you know, I, I have a great team here and I also have a great team outside, you know, Anita Murphy at both these and all the other superintendents area. We really have come together as a group and you can't have us doing this. You know, I know people who've been doing this for 20 years and they say they feel like it's their first year on the job. You know, so it's not just the team here, but it's the extended team and Department of Health and everyone who's there. I mean, we're all a team. There's just so many people that are involved in doing this. It goes way beyond just the district.
I don't think there's any history here that somebody could lean back on this.
I'm in.
Well, this is the way we used to do it. There's no use to.
It is so different.
Yeah.
Just so different.
We're making it up as we go, everybody.
Yeah.
Setting the tone for the future as well.
And learn, yeah, learn everything about.
But you're, we appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Sampson has joined us remotely.
I have. I apologize, I couldn't get it, get it working. It was telling me the meeting wasn't started. But here I am.
Yep, right here. Okay, and we're on the good of the order. And I just, and I'm sure this is on behalf of the board, we did have three long-term employees have their last day, Kathy Fiero, 12:23 with 33 years of service, Michelle Snyder, 12:23, last day, 31 years, and Deb Baron on 110, 16 years. And we wish we could, in person, thank you for all of your service. Wish we could be having a celebration live. Unfortunately, that can't happen at this point, but we wish you all the best and your well-deserved retirement time and thank you for all you've done for the past.
Okay, any other good as orders from board?
Did people get to see the signs?
Yeah.
That they put on Kathy's, on you also on.
Yeah. Very cool. Okay. All right, up to for the public to be heard, again, we made the decision due to the uptick in COVID cases to, to have our meeting not open to the public this month. We will continue to reevaluate it based on what is happening in the community each month. But as always, we welcome and encourage comments from the community either by email or signing up to be similar to what Rob said on WebEx and to ask questions before each meeting. For this meeting, we had one comment from Carrie Connolly requesting information on the criteria for Boysville to go all remote instruction. That will be part of our superintendent's report anyway, so I will defer it until when you give us your report, Frank. I think that's okay. And so we'll move on to reports and presentations. Firstly, in year at a glance, budget presentation by Mr. McCray.
Okay, well, it's not just gonna be me today.
Yes, right.
So today, Mr. Jim Southard, so Jim, has joined us as our new Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. I have Jim, no picture right now. Jim, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
All right. So Jim is here. He's joined us and I'm very excited to have Jim. He's from the Rider School District he's joined us from, and he was originally from the Baldwinville area, so very happy to have Jim here. He brings a wealth of knowledge areas. Jim's had 16 years experience as a business official and in that kind of role. So he brings a wealth of knowledge to the district and I'm excited to have him as a partner. So with that being said, it's gonna be our first presentation to the board, just starting Jim off right, right away, day one. I'm going to share my screen. I figured out how to do this. And there we go. Look at that. All right, so this is a big picture overview of what's going on in New York. It's not specific to our district, but as we're starting the budget process and, you know, I'm working on that budget with Jim and we're gonna have a budget for the board pretty soon in February, I think it's important to know what's happening in New York now and what some of the future things can happen will affect our district in 21, 22, and so on. So that's kind of where we're going with this. And there we go. So, big picture. As you all know, the state aid for the current year is not final. You know, schools are still warned. There was a 20% reduction. The federal funds have been approved. You know, as Jim said today to me, I did not know this, so thank you, Jim, it's an estimated four times the pandemic adjustment. As you know, our pandemic adjustment was roughly $36,000. So we're going to get, you know, four times that amount, which still, in the grand scheme of our expenditures and everything else, is not as much, but it still has to do with our wealth ratio and all the things that we've talked about in the past. The pandemic's also reduced the additional state support, so it's gonna kind of make us whole in regards to what happens. And there's projected deficit and concussing aid as we know, and there's a potential for more restrictive tax cap. And we're gonna kind of go over those things. So these are the big things that are kind of out there in the state right now. So, kind of just an overview of state spending. It's basically been flat, as you all are aware. The foundation aid has been frozen to the $0 increase. There's a $1.1 billion reduction in state aid, backed though by the Federal Care Act funding, as you are aware. And the state can withhold funding based on how state finances look through the year. As we know that, that's been the kind of thing that's been looming over our head. They have those look backs. I'm gonna talk about that in a moment. And they can change it anytime they want to and we know what kind of fiscal crisis we're in as a state. Jim, I talk fast, so if you want to jump in anytime, let me know.
I will.
Or just jump in. So, new costs and pressures. Districts on average spend $219. Jim, you said your former district was probably double that?
It was almost 400 because we had to purchase so many desks.
We've been pretty good with our resources reallocating what we have, really trying to be fiscally sound. This is not our expenditure. What this is, is just an overview of the 24 superintendents in the area. We kind of combined it. This is just an average of those numbers on my hands. But as you know, it's an increased expenditure. New York State's looking at a revenue loss of $14.9 billion when the, when the gap elimination act back in 2011, they were, that's where we were, 16 million back then. So we are getting right back to that time in crisis again. That's where New York is, so, you know, if you have any comparison to back then, this is where we're kind of leaning towards. The projected state budget gap is more than $8 billion for the next three years. You know, I hate to be the doom and gloom, but we have to be honest in what the, what the picture looks like, the landscape looks like. And there's still that possible mid-year reduction of 20%, for the state aid for 2021. As Jim said today, and he said it perfectly, I don't want to take away your thunder, Jim, you know, the budget's coming out and he still has to make the budget whole for this year, right?
Yes, they have to let us know within the next couple of weeks before the new budget comes out, what the changes are for the current.
So, there's, there's still that chance that there's gonna be a reduction in current state aid that we still have to go for. As we went over in the audit committee, we do have funds that we can utilize for that. It all depends on how much it's going to be. If it's a 20% reduction, that's about $1.6 million for us, so that would not be good. But anything less than 20% is something that we could probably handle, so.
But you should understand, there seems to be a dispute as to whether or not there's been any money held back or not to date.
I'm gonna get to that.
You're gonna get to that.
Yep, I'm gonna get to it. I will explain to it because they're saying it hasn't been held back, but there's been some adjustments. Jim, if you want to mention anything, adjustments is kind of the way we'll call it, right?
During July and August, they did make adjustments of 20% holding back. Then they had to make the TRS payments and had to make them in full, so they had to release all of the money that was due during that time period.
So we're whole now? Well, not.
We're not whole for the January, for the July and August payments.
But that didn't impact as much for us, depending on what we had, other school districts that did. Where we're impacted is the transportation need, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So we're not whole on that at all. So, as you all know, this is pretty simple. If a 20% reduction happened in New York State for schools, it'd be a huge hit for New York schools. And I'm not saying anything that everyone hasn't heard already. Just to give you a little hint on what that 20% would look like, in 1991, there was a mid-year reduction of 7%. Again, 2011, 12, with the gap elimination adjustment was $2.6 billion. So you're seeing the scope and scale of where New York State is right now. I don't think everybody kind of sees it in that way, so it was kind of good to give you a small perspective of that. So, here is the, here's the additional little fiscal challenge that we've been made aware of and you all know. Transportation aid's been held back in the springtime. New York State stated that we can't provide, they can't reimburse us for what was spent during the closure. There, so that's roughly $120,000 right now, and that's if we get funded through May to June. So right now, it's all the way through. We're trying to get that up until maybe we can get funded. And that's gonna be about $120,000 for us. So we're, we're not in a great place with our loss, but that's the expenditure that we're looking at losing in transportation.
Hey Frank, if the board regions would propose an amendment, would that be included in the governor's budget?
I don't know that answer. Jim, do you know that answer?
No, I do not. That would be one place they could potentially put it, but we don't know any information on that.
I might get that and find out.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Jim. If it's one place you could put it, the board regions would have to have the governor's support.
Yeah.
And they would.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, it would, it would be a solid point.
The regions always put out a number that I would say the governor pretty much ignores.
Yep. So, but speaking of board of regents, here are their priorities. They want to repeal the pandemic adjustment. They want to reimburse districts for their cost to deliver meals, as we talked about, material and technology. Reimburse districts for expense-based aid, that's the transportation and other things, because they're still holding some of that money. Same with the BOSI's money and expense-based aid, they haven't been made whole. Not that they're holding it, we just haven't been made whole on that. And we want to make sure that, you know, any permanent state aid cuts must account for district wealth and physical capacity. Now, that's great for school districts that, you know, have high poverty and high socioeconomic status, but as you know, average wealth districts like ours, it's still gonna have an impact on us. We're, we're heavy taxpayers on our taxpayers. And, you know, we're not getting a ton of money, so if they do any cuts, they're going to take more from the wealth districts than us. So, you know, we just need to have that in mind of our planning.
Where are we in that, that lineup?
We are a very wealthy district. We're, you know, we had a lot of growth, highest growth in the Capitol District. So, we're, you know, we're at the end where we're not gonna be getting sort of a lot of money.
The attitude's gonna be, you guys can take care of yourself.
Um, that we're, that we're sufficient. And again, you remember too, some of these districts are 70% or 90% or 80%, you know, dependent on aid. So if you're taking 20% of them, that's $30 million, you know, $40 million for some of these districts. They won't be able to sustain any program. So, you know, there has to be a level across districts. We can't say, well, it's us against them, because it's all together. We're all for kids. And, you know, when you have districts that are heavily dependent and they take 20%, those districts are gonna suffer even worse. So it's, it's a scary thought. Here is the other one. Jim, would you like to explain this one?
This one, yes. The tax cap, because the CPI has been bouncing down so much, it may be low this year. And we do have significant growth of, I believe it was 1.87% in our property tax value, our new property tax value, which would increase that slightly, but since we have debt service payments falling off, that would reduce the amount. So there is the potential that depending on what we do with the budget, it could be very low or even negative.
That's a scary thought. And again, when you're, you're tax, you're dependent on your taxpayers and you can't increase your tax gap, that's gonna be a concern. So it's just something we have to watch right now. These are projected. These aren't set in stone. We're not exactly sure. Again, I don't want to start the doom and gloom or the concern. I just want to share what the landscape is looking like.
Where did that chart come from?
How BOSI's provided that to me. And that was Educational Conference Board Finance Bureau.
Well, CPI's gotta be pretty low.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be low. And for people, we utilize the CPI in figuring out the tax gap.
There is inflation in places, so food, building materials. Unfortunately, economy is very high.
So, we're hoping.
Relatively for, for.
So, and then, you know, these are just the typical stage of budget timelines that we know are gonna happen. So we're waiting in January right now for the governor, even if it does come out on time. And even if we get a budget in time in April, we're not sure, right? Because it's, it's, these are really heavy questions. Are you looking at me like, no, probably not? Like, we know this is a, you know, it's gonna be a hard year for school districts, a hard year for our government. It's just, everybody's gonna feel the pressure and everybody needs and everybody wants, and it's important because everybody is suffering in right now. It's not just a, a school issue, right? Mental health is having deficits, you know, nursing staff, hospitals, everybody is short. So, you know, and there's only so much money to go around and we're looking at a deficit for New York State. So the January proposal from the governor, as you all know, is usually the lowest end. As a district, we're gonna utilize that run to really kind of set the tone of what we can do. Now, if anything changes and increases, that's great and that's, and that's butter for us and we can try to figure out more with it. But we really need to understand where we are on the, basically the bottom. So that's usually what the governor's proposal is. And then just our, just our typical school budget dates, as we'll talk about later on. And that is it. Any questions for Jim or myself?
Thank you, and thank you for starting this process so early and Jim for joining in your first day, things like that. And we look forward to ongoing, continuous updates, education. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
I'm gonna make you back now to an attendee, all right? If I don't.
Okay.
I have no idea. I'm trying one more time. Jim, I apologize. I cannot. Just turn off, turn off your camera wheelbell.
Perfect. All right. That's good, good. Okay. So next we'll have superintendent's report. I'm agreed.
All right, so I think the number one thing I need to start with is, you know, the, that happens over the weekend and the conversations of having schools open in Albany County and in general, having schools open during COVID. As you're aware, there was a lot that happened and as Dr. Waylon was stated today, it's a multifaceted decision that has to be made to be able to have schools open or not. And, you know, the gov, the, the two people who can choose to have a school open or close is the governor or me. And, you know, we, we know this and, you know, making those decisions, we, we heavily on school districts. And we have to balance the safety of all of our students and our staff, but also have to balance the educational need of our, of our community. So those are decisions that we take into account. We utilize our partners with the Department of Health, utilize all of our data. So those things all come together to make those decisions. And that's why, you know, right now, and the superintendents in the area, we are united. We believe that, you know, schools are the safest place for students to be at this time. You know, it's structured. We have the ability to make sure that we can limit. We have our mitigation processes. So we have all of these things put in place in schools that are going on that aren't in the greater community. You know, right now, schools have really structured environments, you know, as we've been able to show. And we have mitigation efforts, so if we do have somebody who's got the sniffle, they're out the door, right? And we have our quarantines, we have all these different things. We have those programs in place so we can be able to function as a school district. So when Dr. Waylon is talking about multifaceted, we have to look at our rates, you know. Do we have more, any spread in school? If we had spread in school, chances are I would not have school, right? Because that becomes an issue and a concern of safety. So those are the things that come in. The other issue that comes in, and this is a huge one, is staffing. You're gonna see me close for remote way sooner for staffing than you will for COVID. I, I, that is my kind of mark in it, because if we have quarantine marks and say, I quarantine, we have quarantines and Albany County Quarantines have staff members, that's 10 staff members that I don't have in my building. They could possibly stream in to the students that are here, but I still need supervision in that classroom. So I still need a body in it. And it's very hard to get subs to travel during COVID because subs don't want to go from district to district to district to district right now. So we have a group of subs that do it, but we're not gonna always have enough staff. And you see other districts that are in the same boat with this. We're not, you know, the same, same with transportation today. There is a district today in another county that could not open because they just didn't have enough transportation. That, you know, these are all the different kind of facets that we have to look at. So those are some of the reasons we will close or we will go remote. And it's, it's, each day is a different day. I will tell you, I wake up in the morning, we evaluate it. In the middle of the day, it gets evaluated. Before I go to bed at night, it's evaluated. You know, we don't walk into this lightly and it's something that we definitely look at each day, you know, hour by hour, to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
How well have we commuted that, that, that piece to the community?
Jim, I, I don't know that answer, because, you know, I know I've said things like this. I haven't gone in depth. Like, again, I just spoke to you, I spoke at you for four minutes regarding why I would stay open, right? That's very hard to put out into any communication pieces in writing or anything else. I've shared the staffing, I've shared, you know, the spread, but these are the things. I would typically, what I would do.
When you think, when you think that perhaps the, the more that kind, that piece gets to the community so that they can understand what we are facing over a considerable length of time.
And I do believe there's members of our community, you know, there's a lot of members that support it. I did not get a lot of emails saying I should have closed. I got a lot of emails thanking me that we were open. And, you know, and then there's still people, we have the option of going remote. We've, we've developed a very robust remote program that I'm very proud of as superintendent. Rob, you're shaking your head because you know it well.
It's fantastic.
Yeah, I'm very proud of our district. We've reinvented, in comparison to where we were last year to this year, our staff's done amazing jobs developing a revolts remote program, so we've been able to offer that to our community. So if there are people that cannot come, their health concerns, they have anxiety concerns with this, then that's, that's understandable.
Yeah, my, my concern always really, if the community really gets to grab on that.
And I believe they are. I believe it's getting out there. And I think the more we talk about it, the more it gets out there today. I know the briefing with County Lieutenant Coy and Dr. Waylon, and they talked about the same issues. You know, it's really difficult and it's all these different things going to play, you know? And we just have to really watch it. And then if we talk about testing, moving over a little bit, something I want to talk about. The governor today came out and said, you know, all schools at 9% need to test. Well, we're not in a zone yet. So the devil's gonna be in the details of what that looks like for us. We're ready to go. So Rachel, just let me finish my thoughts and then I'll, I'll call you. We're ready to test. We have all the tests here that were provided from the state for zone testing, right? And we're utilizing the county. I can't do surveillance testing on state tests that were provided to the district unless I get approval to do so. So I need someone to say, you as a district can test. The minute they say that, we're testing. It's, it's game on. We, we got a plan, we're ready to go, but we can't do that until we get the green light to do so, you know, Rachel.
That goes right to the question that I feel like you, you kind of answered, but you said the only people can close schools are you and the governor. And I totally get that, but it's been really confusing because it feels like the Department of Health has been saying whether or not schools should be open, you know, definitely Saturday was a delightful political football game of who's, and I know these are recommendations in terms of, I'm looking at this landscape and saying it, but basically, my understanding of whether or not we should be open or closed is based on your evaluation of the school and the resources and all of that. And that seems like a, whether or not to be closed or open is a really great way of looking at it. The governor is looking at it. And that's it, those, those two bodies of eyeballs. But when you say, who's gonna say whether or not we should test, comes to, the tests are given to the district by the state. So who would give the green light to start testing or is there a, you know, is there like a, a counterpoint of, you know, like a, a counter, a dial where it says, okay, we hit 9%. Once we hit 9%, you go ahead and test, where you're waiting for a phone call and that will come from?
We're waiting for the details of how to do it. Albany County Department of Health is who we're underneath for our testing. So we have, we utilize their LSL. So Albany County Department of Health is gonna say, okay, you have our LSL, you can test, you have this. Then we're gonna have the green light to conduct the testing, because we have the, we have the declares. We're not a health organization.
No.
You know, so, you know, we're getting it from that. And I think, Rachel, what you said is very important when you said, I get the information, but it's me in here. I use the Department of Health. But Department of Health, they give us the recommendations, you know, and it's very important. As Dr. Waylon said, each school district is working with liaisons. They mentioned Ryan Radigan, who we've worked with, he's fantastic. I, I work a lot with Patricia, like she's fantastic. I mean, we know these people by name. We're talking to them all the time. We're all having these conversations. So we utilize their expertise to be able to say, here's our cases, here's what we have. Are you seeing this? Are you seeing that? So, you know, that's a recommendation. But when it comes to testing in the end, we have to have an approval from the New York State Department of Health or Albany County Department of Health or the governor has to say, we're in a zone, because then if we're in a zone, sorry, state, that school has to test X amount.
But a question, because my understanding was that there was an executive order that established the idea of the zone and as of December 31st, that order kind of fell to the wayside. It needs to be reestablished. So until that gets reestablished, we cannot theoretically be put into a zone. Is that?
I, you're, you're.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good, because I, I got.
There are no zones.
And I will be honest with you, it's confusing. It is confusing. We're, you know, and Department of Health, that is today. A lot of times, we find out about these things every time, when every other New Yorker knows too. You know?
10, 30 of them.
So. At one time, there was this report card.
Yep.
And it had staff, a student, staff or a community member.
Still out there.
It's still there? Are we using that? I mean.
Oh, yeah, we report to whatever.
You report to it. And does that then give you some sort of a positive rate?
So that doesn't, because, well, I love you, can I, yes. So what happens for us? We know then the specifics of it, right? So let's say, let's say I'm COVID positive. Chances are then I'm gonna say, well, there's an individual, blah, 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 who's COVID positive. Then I have seven people that live in my household, which is not true, but let's just say seven other people live in my household. Six of those people in my house, then after they get quarantined, you know, after they're quarantined for two weeks, they start showing symptoms, so then it's another. they start showing symptoms. So then it's another one, and another one, and another one. And for the next two months, my family counts for six cases of, of outreach, you know, to the community. So it's really one household that's been quarantined for the full timeframe, but those six cases are there. Now you're seeing this six cases. So we have an understanding of how they're clustered together, so that gives us a better percentage. So no, that gives you an overall idea, but when we look at our data and really take it down to who those families are, and who those people are, and who those staff members are, and understand households, that gives us a better understanding of percentage.
So is that report card data being used for anything?
Um, the state is looking at it, school districts, you know.
Are they using it to create their, their clusters?
No.
Rob?
No, and it really, what that report card data is for is for, for parents, for community members, for people to see, and it was supposed to be, uh, to provide transparency and accountability. One of the really frustrating things, though, you know, at least for me, and I know I've mentioned this to you before, Frank, I, I don't know if you've looked at the report card lately, but it is very, uh, out of sync now. I think to a tune of like fourteen additional lab report, reported cases. I don't think that'll catch up with the six that were, happened over break. Um, but, so there's the two components. There's what we report, and then also automatically labs that do a test. If somebody resides in one of the zip codes for our district, um, and are under the age of eighteen, they get reported automatically on that dashboard. Theoretically, it's all supposed to record file, and if it's somebody at a private school, somebody who was homeschooled, we should still be notified properly, and it should all line up. What's happened, and we're far from the only district, I, I think all of the districts are quite out of sync with those numbers, is that, you know, we have twenty-four lab-reported cases of positives among students, um, but only ten that we know about with our reporting. So whether that's duplicates, whether it's, uh, it's almost, the, the dashboard's almost sort of, I don't want to say useless at this point, but it's, the, the, the data is not, uh, you know, certainly from the state side, not super accurate, maybe. Hard to tell, but frustrating.
Hard to tell. So those are, you know, tho, those are some of the issues that we're dealing with in operating, you know? But again, we're still making sure that we're doing all the things. Our H thirteen filters that were on backorder, we push, 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 they're on a truck, they'll be here on Wednesday. So, and our guys are ready to run, rock and roll, be able to do that, you know? It's all of them. So we've pushed, pushed, pushed to get them here, and I was told today they're all on a truck, so. Yeah, they're not, I think they just don't want to hear me anymore, to be honest. So, you know, we're doing everything we can. We bought tons of individual HEPA filters. We've looked at the ventilation, how many airflow we're getting, you know, we're looking at our sanitizing. We've increased again and reminded people of the, the protocols. So all of these things together go inside, and the minute one of those starts to falter, then I have to look at it and make a decision, you know? So it's, it's not easy. You know, I know that people feel one way or the other, and there's a lot of issues that go in with it. But, you know, it's a day-to-day thing of trying to figure out how we're going to open. So there's not a cut-and-dry answer. There's not a percentage or a marker of how many cases we're going to get that we're going to close. It's not that ea, I, three months ago, I asked for it. I asked for it two weeks ago. Give me a percentage, give me a benchmark. It's not there. It's, we, it takes so many other things to be able to make a sound evaluation. And again, we're balancing off the safety, and we're balancing off the need of our students.
Are you, uh, being surprised by your staffing, uh, situation? Or are you, is it, are you pretty aware of who's available, who's not available?
Yeah.
What's happening among the staff as far as their, um, having to need to quarantine or things like that? Is that what we communicated?
Yeah, so I, I, I'm involved in the quarantine and everything, and the, the building principals do a fantastic job of making sure they're building their staff, right? That's their roles, and they're doing a fantastic job, and the staff are doing a great job covering, or their staff members. You know, peop, it's all hands on deck, and, you know, they're, they're a really good control. I don't have a complete understanding, but I have faith in the system that is in place. And when my, the, the principal say, we can't do this, I trust in the fact that they just can't do it. You know, they, you know, they, they've expended and done everything they can to get the, you know, that open. And if they tell me we don't have the staffing to open, then I, then it is what it is. Because I, I trust that they're doing a great job with it. Oh, not so much. Am I, Rob, am I still screening, sharing, or no? That was an old.
No, I, I just, yep, you, you are still sharing, uh, your screen. It's, it's, it's on questions back you, so.
Huh. That's all right.
All right, I'll keep going.
I should have said something a little while ago. I, I just, yeah.
Oh, all right. I have no idea. I'm horrible at technology. Let's just put it that way. All right, so I got two more things I want to talk about really fast as I move off the COVID, um, issues. The COVID, sorry. Um, just one other thing is radon testing. So I know we talked about this. We had radon tests done. It's been something we've discussed as a district to really go over. So they came back today, and I was so nervous to click on the button to read the report. Elementary school, the highest rating at the elementary school is one point one, right? So four is the hot, you know, four, and when you get to four, they're saying you should have mitigation issues. The highest at the elementary school is one point one. The majority of them are point five or less.
That's great.
It was great numbers, because I know there was concern. It's been a long time since they've done it. I know there was a lot of community concern, a lot of people, you know, concerns in general, right? Because I, I, the majority of houses in Borrisville have radon mitigation systems, right? And the high school has radon mitigation system. So the elementary school, fantastic. High school, the numbers were good. You know, again, we do have radon in the building. We know there's radon here. There is a mitigation system. The areas where the mitigation system is, is, works great. We did have three rooms that registered, we had two rooms that registered between four and four point seven. So we're going to do an evaluation of that. I'm going to retest it as well. I want to get two tests in there. Then we had another room, and this one was bizarre, because it was clustered next to other rooms that got tested, and those rooms were lower than four, and this room was seven point nine. So that was an outlier, you know? So we're going to have that retested to see, like, what's going on here.
There's interesting fault lines and so on that you can have that, and the disaway airflow, it's really fascinating.
See, you know, I.
Oh, totally. I, I think a lot of it is not radon.
Right. So, so what has happened is, so, you know, when this goes on, we're going to talk to our tech, we're going to talk to other, and, and places. And if we have to, you know, upgrade our mitigation system, we're just going to upgrade our mitigation system, you know, we're, you know, that's the way it's going to be. But overall, um, the, that's it. That's, it's all there was. That was over. And I'm ha, I'm happy with those numbers. I'm happy with what it was in the elementary school. I know there was a lot of concern in the community, so that was great news. I told Cindy today I wanted to save it for the board meeting. Um, it was just good.
I've been waiting for this so long.
I said Rachel, I said Rachel.
And I'm, and I'm going to. And if the facilities committee, I'll share the reports with everybody as well.
I, I will be watching that with.
What's that?
How often do you have to do that?
So I don't think there's, do you know, Rachel?
You need to do it every, every couple of years, every, if you've got your rating readings low enough, then you can have to, like, every five years, you can push it out, but every other year is not a bad idea.
And then we haven't done.
And you could be, like, part of the school and be here kind of thing.
And the last time it was only like twenty years.
Ninety.
It was ninety, so, you know, so it was good.
Long time.
With it in timeframe, it still wasn't a large increase.
Yeah, tha, that's really good news, but it's just, it's kind of like having a, um, a carbon monoxide detector or something. It's just something worth keeping an eye on.
Okay.
So, not to stray too far off topic, but does that apply to residences too, Rachel? I mean, should we all be putting those in our basement every couple of years?
Yes.
Even if you have a mitigation system?
Uh, we have a monitor in ours.
Huh.
It's, it's not a bad idea. It's a, you can have a digital monitor and it can alarm.
Sorry, it isn't. It's good for Rachel though.
Yeah, no, that's, it's a good public service announcement right there.
I'll let you, where radon didn't exist, but I lectured about it, and now it's like, wow. And now I'm writing checks for thousands of dollars to put mitigation systems in our home. Wondering why they weren't there.
So that is all I have, um, of reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Okay.
So let's move on to approval of the minutes. Um, table motion to approve the last one for minutes.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. So we have action items. I think we can group five point one from five point eight. That would be the pressure, pressure, earth report, personnel item, T S C recommendations, generic agreement for installation purchases, um, declaration of surplus, and the approval regulation for tax collector and records management, and approved terms and conditions for employment. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of those items?
I have one question on the, um, generic agreement for the installment.
Yep.
Is that where, um, I looked at, yeah, January this morning, we're purchasing like ninety-three thousand or so
Yep.
for technology, that's the cover last month?
It's a hundred and fifty Chromebooks, and then it's our servers. And then what we do is, since it's an installment purchase, we have money coming off in the summertime that we'll be able to do that. And we always want to have, we, we keep about seventy-two thousand dollars each year spent for that, between sixty-five and seventy-two, because that's expense base income back. So it's money that we're going out, it's money that we know is coming back, and then we can always increase. The reason why we're doing it now is because, as you know, our servers, we're still touch and go. We, we, we've been, we had a good batch this year. Our technology has been, has been pretty solid or so. Um, but we still need to take care of that as soon as possible. And i, at the same time, we can increase our Chromebooks, and we're going to do that as well, so.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So that's all that you put in this hardware and stuff for?
Correct. Yeah, that's all, yeah. And that's, that's what you have. You purchased, it's always hardware.
Okay, that was.
Okay, and, and also in with that grouping, I said five point one to five point eight, but also in there would be approval and budget calendar, that's five point eight. So any other questions for Congress? It's not table motion.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the new, welcome to all the new folks. I think there were a bunch of.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, really, so.
Welcome aboard.
Congrats on.
Thank you. So, hold on a second. Audit Committee Chair Argy, did we get a, a page please, or, or me?
Sure. Thanks, Cindy. So the Audit Committee met, um, prior to this meeting at six P M. Uh, we had a fairly full agenda. Um, one of the things we covered were the school launch fund profit and law statements from November. Um, to boil it down, the lengthy conversation, um, we're running at a, a deficit, um, but we're still in the black at this point in the year due to reimbursement. Um, but we do expect to be in the red, um, for the rest of the fiscal year. So, you know, there's a couple of things that the district is working on to try and close that, that gap. Um, one would be, um, increasing sales through the coffee bar and some other things that may be able to be done in the cafeteria. But it looks like even with those efforts, we're still going to end up with a deficit to the end of the year. Um, this was the situation that we ran into last year as well. And we were able to transfer funds from another fund to close that, um, that deficit. Another thing we went through was the boiler repair, um, which was something that members of the district will recall not so fondly, um, where we had a brand-new boiler room that, um, became, as Rachel said earlier, a second indoor swimming pool. So, um, we walked through the numbers there. It looks like we're at approximately thirty-one thousand in the hole, um, which, given that it was a million-dollar project to do those repairs, are not, it's, it's a, a good place to be. I think Frank and, and the rest of us are happy about that. Um, and there's potential to, um, close that by about twenty-seven thousand for one contested claim that Frank is dealing with, I'm assured, over. We went through the nineteen-twenty versus twenty-twenty-one expenditures through December. If I get anything wrong, Frank, correct me, but at, at this point, we have about a one point six million, um, balance above what we have either expensed or encumbered. And that's based on, um, the treasurer and Frank and the administration that get of the amount of money that we expect to expend, um, during the rest of the school year. So we still have a bit of a surplus that's a good cushion to have, because, um, as Frank and Jim were, um, talking about earlier, if we are impacted by cuts of state aid, we will have, um, a cushion there to soften the blow. And, and we'll obviously be less impacted if we have that, that cushion to fall back on.
The expenditure is one thing. The revenue is the biggest concern.
Absolutely. Uh, we talked through some exceptions, um, from our claims auditor. The bulk of those had to do with a, a VOTI employee who, um, Frank has, um, counseled about what needs to be done properly, and, and I think we'll do better there going forward, which is great news. Um, and finally, we reviewed the Audit Committee charter. Um, it hasn't been looked at in a number of years. So we're going to, um, review it individually, um, and then get together to, um, see if it needs any, any tweaks. And that's it. Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you. Okay. Curriculum Committee, um, maybe we get a report from Chair Timson?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I think I can probably speak for Trish and Rachel and say, this is such a great committee, because we actually talk about teaching and learning. And, uh, you know, there's so much other we, we would have to focus on, but, you know, the core purpose of this school system is that. And we get to talk about those things, and, uh, uh, there was a really good meeting held on December twenty-second. We started off talking about Progression Partners. Progression Partners, uh, we have a grant that has been secured for a first round of training, and this is going to do training in the area of equity action plans, so building-level training, a thing called Equity Walks that will be done at both campuses. It's a district-wide kickoff that will take place in late January. It will be in, the work that will be done with Progression Partners will be in line with board policy regarding hiring practices, materials, uh, protected classes, things of that nature. And, uh, the Progression Partners is going to start off early on with helping the leadership team evaluate baselines here in Borrisville and see what work has to take place over time. It's going to be a long-term effort, multi-year plan, uh, but we're getting underway. Uh, the second thing we talked about was student performance in the first marking period comparing, uh, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. And, um, you know, it hasn't been everything we had hoped for, but it's been such a strange year, and even the comparisons might not be valid. We noticed that, um, there has been some improvements made between the six-week marking period and the ten-week marking period. However, um, there are, uh, quite a few students, um, that are, uh, failing one of their core courses. And there's a whole bunch of reasons for it. Uh, the delivery system, of course, has to do, has, has been changed dramatically. And we're going to have to adjust, uh, the way in which we go about teaching and learning to accommodate this, make sure that those kids get the extra time and help and resources that they need. But Kelly Lundrum, who is, uh, on the committee, pointed out that, uh, it's been tough, and there's a lot of struggles that are taking place. And the longer we go with this COVID, in this COVID environment, it, it's not getting any easier. I guess this is the best way to put it, but, uh, we're, uh, we're gonna, we're, we're holding our own, but, kind of holding our own.
Good question about that, Tim.
Yeah.
So just sort of related to my latest employment, you know, if we have employees who aren't able to perform remotely, we require them to come into the office to work, you know? If someone can't perform their fluies, they've got to show up, or they can be monitored more closely. Is that an option for students who are failing a core course?
So let's utilize our special education program right now. So our special education program, we offer the opportunity for our students to come back. We did not get our full amount of students back. At this point in time during the COVID, we can recommend it, we can ask people, but there might be medical conditions that go on. There might be family issues that we are not aware of. People made a decision for their children to go remote. So we, 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 we really try to bring people back when we want to. And, but I also want to say that, that the failures are not exponentially different from last year. There's small differences where we're seeing it. It's not like we saw a twenty percent increase of failures from quarter one this year and quarter one last year. They're there. I mean, there's definitely, you know, some failures and issues that we're looking at. And we have students that are struggling when they go remote. It's just very hard to bring them all back. And then we're also going to have to look at, you know, can we do it staffing-wise, you know? You know, we, we made the special education work, we're having that come in, but I don't know the capacity of how many more students we can bring in, how much our supervision is. That's also another issue that has to be looked at. So again, yeah, we'd love them all back, but it's just, it's not an easy, straightforward.
Are we talking about staff?
Students.
That, that, I'm tr, relating it to my workplace, where you have to stop staff if they can't. Here, I was thinking more in the context of, you know, if these students are struggling while they're below, the students could be bringing them back. I totally get what you're saying.
Yeah. This is hard.
The next thing that we talked about, uh, was really an important conversation around teacher feedback survey that was solicited in early November. And, uh, a real mix of information. And, uh, a real mix of information, mostly positive. Uh, we, the teachers were responding to this, they showed very strong confidence in the school's adherence to the CDC guidelines. There were twenty percent that were not as competent as the majority. And those concerns have been shared with Frank by the union, and, uh, it sounded as if, I didn't hear any, anything that, it sounded like you'd resolved any of those concerns.
It's, it's a constant conversation, um, you know, the union has a seat at my table, and I have a seat at their table, and we, we talk constantly and have those conversations, and, you know, we're, we're working through them. There's not ever going to be a resolve, I think, at this point with some of these things, but, yeah.
Uh, a question was asked about the hybrid model, how's it working? And I'll just be very brief here, just that sixty-two percent of them said, uh, somewhat smoothly. So, uh, two-thirds said somewhat smoothly. And then not every, you know, some were hired mad, some were less than enthusiastic. Asked about the virtual model, eighteen percent said very smooth, seventy-three percent somewhat smooth. Some of the problems that were brought out were students turning off their mics and their cameras. Uh, it's tough for teachers to give their full attention to students both in person and virtually. And so those are, you know, that whole engagement and communications and such makes it difficult in this virtual model. Um, the weird, teachers were asked to rate the, the current model. Uh, about fifty percent of them said was fair or good. Uh, special ed is, people are feeling pretty good about the way the special ed program. In fact, this survey was done before we brought the special ed kids back, I think. And even then, it was seen, seen as pretty good, and so I'm going to guess it's even more positive now. Uh, however, there were some reactions that said that the current model, um, that we have in place, middle school, fifty-seven percent of those who responded to this, or teachers responded to this survey, said that the current model's poor. And the high school, thirty-two percent said the current model's poor. Um, um, so there was some, you know, that's a conversation we need to have.
Sorry, do you know which way that, that trended? It's poor because, or is it poor or is it-
Well, that's, that's an interesting question that we had. We got all, all into engagement, and is that intensity? Is that in time? And Rachel had brought this, uh, question up about what is engagement? What does this mean when you say, um, the current model is, is not working? So that, kind of digging through that is important to do, yeah. Um, there was a question about rigor, and the teachers believe that the rigor is about the same, but some of the components and some of the lesson plans have had to be omitted. They just, we just didn't have the ability to do it, and so the options that are available to teachers, uh, are fewer. Uh, a question about the engagement was, uh, pretty interesting. At the elementary level, one hundred percent said the, the kids are pretty engaged, uh, very or somewhat engaged. Uh, at the middle school, seventy-one percent said somewhat engaged, twenty-nine percent not very. At the high school, sixty-five percent said somewhat engaged, eight percent said very, twenty-seven percent said not very. And that got us to our question about what does engagement mean, how's it measured, time, intensity, et cetera. Uh, and that was an interesting conversation. A question was about the amount of work, and about fifty-two percent of the respondents said it was similar to the work that was made available last year, pre, pre-COVID. Twenty-three percent said actually the work is a little less. And then when we asked a question about homework, um, at the elementary school, typically less than thirty minutes. At the middle school, somewhere between thirty and sixty minutes. The high school, one to two hours, which was a kind of the way it had been in the prior years as well. So this was a, a bit eye-opening. It wasn't all, you know, positive information, but I was very impressed with the, the honesty that we were getting from the teachers on this, and, uh, there's some work to be done. I don't know if other members of the committee, Frank, if you had anything else you'd want to add to that?
Uh, for me personally, after speaking to them, you, it just gave me a even greater appreciation of everything when teachers are trying to juggle. It seems, especially the middle school and high school teachers that are trying to teach, because in the class at the same time-
Yeah.
as they're teaching the kids at home.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we were trying to point out to any teachers that were listening that, of course, results can be different, you know? And it's not, and we appreciate everything they're trying to do to the families, but I think we all know the expectations are different.
It's a different year. This is not-
Right.
Yeah. I, I mean, I've taught in front of a class, and I've taught through a, a webinar, and it's, it's the most bizarre experience trying to teach through a screen.
Right.
And I cannot imagine, I've never done both simultaneously, and, and it, it's like trying to talk on the phone to someone and talk to someone in the room at the same time. I can't, it's my, my mental image, and it's just the most frustrating thought in my mind is how to do that, so I-
I also think of the numbers this coming week versus last year's coming week were great, because I kind of expected far worse, you know? So I guess my perspective was just-
When you think of a, a public school or a public school institution, you know, it, it's pretty traditional sort of institution, and things each year kind of are not that different. And all of a sudden, boom, and everything's different, and, you know, these-
With no resources.
With no resources, and I, and I, I think we're, we're not even getting to some of the mental health issues and emotional and social issues that they're playing out. And, you know, I can just only imagine just being in front of a, a bunch of kids, and these are kids, and anything could happen at any minute. It's got to be really tough.
Yes, I think it was a bravo moment.
I think the most important thing is, um, if you've seen the viral post from our former superintendent Teresa Snyder, this one out there, you know, it rings true, it's like, you know, it's not about what we can make up and how much we can do, and I said it to the staff at the beginning of the year, it's about, let's do this now, you know? Let's, let's try to have kids be kids, let's learn, let's do these things, let's work together. And we learn from what we're doing at this moment. It's not about how much we can make up or how many, you know, how well we're going to do on the task, it's, let's get it through. And eventually we'll all come back, but let's do our best, let's help everybody through it, so. And I think that committee is doing a fantastic job of, of having those conversations.
Yeah, that article, that article from Teresa got shared nationally.
Yeah.
It's been all over the place now. And, uh, you know, when you think about it, these, all of us are going through a learning experience that we've never experienced in our lives. And I think she said it very well, so, you know, you, we can go back and say, hey, you got a reading, writing, arithmetic. Well, you know, we're working a whole lot of stuff that is going to be very handy in our lives going forward. Uh, let's kind of rethink the value of this period, and, uh, I thought it was pretty well said.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, next up, um, Rob, chair, Philby?
Uh, we, we did not meet, uh, we'll be meeting in January.
Okay, thank you. Okay, policy, Rachel's chair?
We also did not meet, we met right before-
The last-
The last meeting, and then we are meeting on Wednesday, so anyone who wants to sit, um, you know, talk to me.
You're more than welcome. Okay, thank you. Okay, new business, okay, we have exception, seven, let's take seven point one by itself, exception of donations, and it's a very generous donation, a relationship memorial scholarship. Do you have a, a motion to move that?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments? Thank you, you're a good-
Thank you.
Yeah, very much appreciated.
Makes it honor, also.
Yes, very much, thank you. Thank you. Okay, seven point two approved scholarship fund. And this scholarship, um, is to approve the creation of two one-time scholarship funds in honor of retirees Kathy Fial and Michelle Snyder, um, as presented in the attachment. Um, this was put together by colleagues, and I think that's, uh, will be a way to honor for some seniors this year to receive these scholarships. So can I get a motion to move that?
Move it.
I'll second that one.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Supporting math in the mathematics.
Yep, yep, so that's beautiful. That's awesome, okay. Um, so now, let's take seven point three, seven point four, seven point five, which is, um, policy for a vote that we discussed last time, so it's up for a vote. So can I have a motion to move those straight?
So I, just before we do that, on seven point five, I, um, there is a couple of, like, there's one thing where we need a couple of places. Um, I think it's fine, it just needs a couple of, like, cleanup edits, and then I think we're going to-
Yeah.
I don't know how we handle that.
You can approve, you can approve it in general.
Approve it, yes, well, yeah.
The wording won't change, uh, right.
Right, but you're okay with that?
I'm, I'm fine with the context. I noticed when I was reviewing it, a couple are just, you know, crazy, you know, things that I can have along.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Just in copies of committee, yeah.
Yeah.
We're meeting, we're meeting on Wednesday. Yeah, anyone who's listening now, join us on Wednesday when we talk more about it. Yeah, I, um, I'd be happy to move this, so very excited.
Okay. Can you move that, second?
I'll second.
Say all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, policy committee, that was a happy one.
It's very exciting.
Yes, very exciting.
Moving us forward and having a guide for the district, great.
But there's, you know, there's more work to do.
Oh, yeah.
It's just the beginning. Tevele a lot of time. Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you for the work on that, and all of the work in policy, I mean, that, that, like, I would say, that's our governance and policy, so, which appreciated. Okay, up to you for the voice we heard? We heard it. Okay, all right, and then we'll move on to dates to remember. We will have a special meeting Monday, or Tuesday, this should be Tuesday, January nineteenth, right? Because Mondays are more in the middle of things, so Tuesday, January nineteenth, at five thirty. And then our next regular meeting will be Monday, Monday, February sixth, at seven P M.
February eighth, yeah, February eighth.
Oh, February eighth, yeah.
Well, can you say meetings be remote, or will we be meeting in, in the evening?
I think, because we're going to have an executive, that's going to, we're going to have an executive session after that. So-
Yes, sir.
This, this, um, special board meeting, that's at five thirty.
And then executive and regular?
No, right, the, right, special board meeting, yeah, it's just like one, um-
It's anticipation of something, yeah.
Right, right, so, I think, I think, um, we can do it like this, and if people choose to do remote, but I think we'd be expecting a second, do it here, is everybody good with that? As long as times aren't the same.
These only little work is, we have a facilities meeting that day too.
Yep.
Which will be remote, uh, so I just don't know if I'm getting here after that.
What time is your facilities meeting?
Is that four, right, Rob? Four o'clock on the ranking?
I think so.
That's what I have.
Sounds right.
Can, can you move that to three thirty in your schedule at all? Or can you check? Or just make it an hour?
Uh-
For one, hey, we did last time.
Make it an hour.
Yeah.
Do it.
I'm, I'm sure it'll only be an hour.
Okay.
I can make it forty-five minutes, we got this, alright.
There you go.
Right.
Just how wonderful they are.
Can the committee members, can the committee members come here?
And, what's that?
Yeah, if they wanted to.
If the committee members want to come here.
So, yeah, and it's, it's, and that was real close, they'll be here in plenty of time, so. Okay. Thank you, all right, so, that looks like that. So, um, wishing everyone in the community, my fellow board members, a very happy, healthy New Year, and all the best.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Okay.
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your voice will-
I think you can.